Somebody to make an amendment first.
I move that we amend the agenda to eliminate the executive session at the beginning because it's been rescheduled.
Second, second down here. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
And I'll make a second motion that we eliminate the one at the end because that's going to be rescheduled as well.
Second. Questions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, closed. Okay, we're going to start with our public input statement.
On my side here.
Good evening. The first public input session is a 21-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel cannot be made during public input. This community pledged to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward. This, this is a time for comments and our questions for the board, but please be aware that questions may not be able to be answered at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any public input tonight? No. Okay, moving on. Minutes of November 7. Corrections, changes?
I had emailed through a couple.
Yep, I made some corrections. I made the adjustments. There was, or I, I put quotes around Messenger so you knew that it was a little Messenger thing. And then I consolidated the multiple sessions that we held because we've been negotiating. It was just one instead of three.
Motion to accept the amendments as amended.
A second? For the discussion. Hey, all those. Voting no or abstaining? Okay, good.
Norms checker. Okay, so at our last meeting, we talked about having a norms checker as part of the meeting process. So it sounded like we wanted to go in that direction for this evening. Do we have a volunteer to be a norms checker? I will say again, like, this would be a time when you're looking at the norms and if there is a problem with how we're moving through those norms, we have the note card that you can just hold up and then we, that means we can stop and just kind of recheck and make sure we're following those norms.
Take volunteers?
Yeah, we just, I think.
I can, I'll volunteer to be tributary tonight.
Okay, you get the lovely orange card.
I have some questions about us following norms, so I don't know whether we want to address it now or at another time because I feel like after Nancy sent out that mail, that's not following board norms.
Well, why don't we discuss that when we get there?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we have the October financial summary.
So you should have received the October summary with the agendas. So you can see that we are one-third of the way through the fiscal year already. We are on target with our revenue categories. Again, most of our revenue comes from the towns and from the state. And they regularly make their monthly payments, so that's really on track. Down below, again, you can see different expense categories and different amounts remaining. You'll notice regular instruction, for example, has 7% remaining. A large part of that is because what we spend and what we encumber is largely salaries and benefits. So we spend some money over the summers and things to get supplies, but it leaves us little because most of it is already spent or it's a coverage for supplies, I mean, excuse me, salaries. And you can see, for example, maintenance expenses still has quite a bit outstanding. That's because we haven't gone through the winter, the snow plowing, things like that. I think the last time I was here, we talked about the extreme overage in athletic transportation. That continues to be an issue. Through yesterday, we have spent 65% of our annual budget. So we've spent 90, oh, just over 92,000 of a $142,000. What I will tell you on the positive side is the Mr. DuFort, the high school principal, and Mr. Moore, the athletic director, have been talking about trying to come up with some creative ideas. We are working with the transportation director and we hope in the coming weeks we have some news to share about some alternate ways to reduce that kind of going forward, so. That's about what I have.
Can I ask a question about energy expense? Is this warm weather helping us?
It's kind of hard to quantify because every year, the expense of what it is, if you're talking electricity and oil, is hard to gauge because it, CMP rates are rates. We lock in on certain things. Like we locked in on the kilowatt hours, but the supply costs of getting it to us increase as CMP needs to increase it. We have locked in on oil for the year, but we really haven't hit a huge, you know, this time of year, we don't have a huge expense in that way. So in the coming months, what I'll do is just make a note and try to keep us informed about how it's going, but as of right now, we haven't used, I don't think we've used enough oil, for example, to really engage.
Okay, cool.
Which could be good. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
I have a question. I probably have asked it before, but the other expenses, is that basically for food service?
So that $25,000, is that the line? Yes, so what we do is we put in a $25,000 contingency for other expenses. Historically, and largely pre-COVID, we used it for school nutrition in case they had an unexpected problem with a, you know, a stove or an oven or something big and can cost. Over the last few years, since the state has been helping to fund the federal government and we have free lunch for students, we are in a better place financially. And so we've been able to absorb those things, so we've kept this here. It's a very small number. But again, this year, we are going to be using it to redo our leaf field. That's, it's for those type of.
Which looks very good.
Last week.
Yeah, Kevin sent us a picture when it was completed.
That's great. Any other questions?
Okay, all right, well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, annual legislative check-in.
Okay, we're going to start before we talk about the annual check-in that we do here. We're going to talk about what we attended last Thursday. And Susan was just talking about, there was a piece on homelessness first, so we'll talk a little bit about that and then we'll talk about some of the highlights of the, the meeting.
Sure, for, so for the second year in a row, the legislators were invited to come to Stanford High School to talk about New York County and Cumberland County, but specifically New York County concerns regarding the homelessness issues that are happening, so there was folks from different agencies, the Alfred Shelter, Caring Unlimited, a few other folks that came in and and York County Community Action, who just presented statistics from information about what's happening in the area right now and talked about, honestly, the legislators were there, so they were asking for them to really consider funding to support the programs that were out there. The Alfred Shelter has been on a waitlist for like years where they have families that are not able to receive shelter because there's just so many people in need. The housing crisis that is in our area has also, was also talked about. Sanford Housing Authority was also there as well. And so that was, that was that piece of it. Then legislators were able to get up and ask questions. There was only two questions available to ask because it got, the first one was a long question and it took a while to get through. And then we were moving from that, that was from six to, five to six, yeah, five to six, and then we moved into the different session with the York County superintendents got together and asked the, they served a meal, which we weren't expecting, so the Sanford culinary crew actually presented a meal, which was great. And then we sat at tables and had conversations around some of the concerns that were facing us in terms of legislative action that required school districts to respond, so mandates and that thing. And we've, we grabbed the copies that the York County superintendent crew made that has, it has a lot of the questions inside it. And just talking about, yeah, actually, when I got that, so just talking about the mandates that were placed in front of us, the big focus was on unfunded mandates that come down, homeless population increases. You know, funding and taxpayer expenses and how it's really difficult to have requirements, but also have unfunded requirements, so it ends up becoming a local burden rather than spread out. And some questions regarding restrictive laws around financial support, staffing issues that are coming up for us in terms of being able to hire, and student mental health issues that have been arising. So this document, Jeremy Ray is the president of the York County Superintendent, did a great job pulling this all together, and I think it's got some good information for folks. Pay family leave is another legislative mandate that we need to address in our coming budget with little support at this point, so. We're just kind of, we wanted to get that information out to you guys so you had it to look at and we can talk. Upcoming budget meetings. So that legislation is this year. January 1 is the, is the timeline and but there's, there's a whole staggered piece of it, so there's, January 1 is for certain staff groups, and then it depends on where we are in their actual contract. So if we're in the middle of negotiating contracts, some of those will get pushed out until the contract is finalized, so. It looks like we've got a January 1, we've got a spring, and we've got a September. So there's a whole host of things that will be kind of ticking off as the, as the year goes on. And Denise has it all written down, and that is when we have to start putting the that, pulling that, that 1% out. And at this point, the 1% language is between the district and the employee, so it's a 50/50 at this point.
And then just piggybacking off that email from Tiffany Roberts, and she CC'd other to talk about that annual meeting when she likes to come in prior to the session to talk about our priorities. So just, we have two December meetings and what we'll do is we will, we will, we'll send her an email just, she wanted a workshop model instead of just being in it on an agenda item. So we would schedule that for like a 7 o'clock to 7:20 or 7:30 and have them come in. You know, last time it wasn't just Tiffany, we had a broader range of just different elected officials, so we will send that out to her. So it could be the 5th or it could be the 19th, but just so you are aware, we will do that.
Yeah, we'll invite all of our representatives.
Tiffany comes so well-prepared, and I, I do understand her thought that it might, it's better as a workshop than trying to. I mean, I, I don't know how much the others, the others didn't participate that much, really, but I don't, is it better to do it before the meeting? Is 20 minutes enough? I don't, I think she's really looking.
Check-in.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we do that, then it would be closer to the 19th because we've got the code of conduct on the 5th, that runs until quarter of 7 or 7. So we can see how much time she needs.
I know, this is my thought.
Also, that would maybe give us more time to get more reps involved and be able to be here, so we can talk. We'll, we'll put an invite out and see, see what we can get. Be good to have them here.
Yeah. So that could potentially be the 19th at 6:30 for a workshop.
Okay, maybe, yeah.
That way, if it does go a little past 7, we still have time.
Okay.
Okay, next is board goals discussion.
Okay, so just as a continuation, I know this is just part one of this discussion. Last meeting, we went through all four of the, this draft goals. And Elva had asked that we compile it all in a document, so we had, we had that on the agenda with the documents. And so this is, these are the areas, so what we did is we took the strategic plan already from the strategic plan and built goals under each of those areas. Student community engagement, school safety, high-quality resources, and pathways to success. That is what we did as part of the district process for that, the goals. I also wanted to take a moment to share, there's just a few here. Goals from different districts. And we looked on different school district sites, some of their goals. What I will say is some of the districts that we, their goals are their strategic plans. And then here we have Yarmouth, and we have Marshwood, and we have. I knew you were curious about that. So those are just samples of some of our neighboring districts and what they, how they talk through the just so you have that information. The ones we already presented, it just. Ones that say draft are the ones that we presented, presented a couple times. Just, yes, that page. And just, it's all compiled in one spot.
Does anybody have any questions on these goals?
I like how Yarmouth has the action step timeline and evidence. I think that's a really cool way to measure it. I really like the visual. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, that's your, yes. So yeah, they have actions that have been evidenced, and just visually, that's like very satisfying to me. Yes.
Hey, Josh, do you have yours to hand out to us?
I, yes, we do, and so, yeah, let's, let's hook up and let's discuss. I did put together a presentation just so those attending virtually can see what we're, what we're also seeing. I hope the audience, if anyone wants them, I know there are some in the back of the room at a table. So while this hooks up, two seconds. Maybe, Brian, you guys might want to shift out of the center a little bit, maybe.
Oh, is this going up here?
Yeah.
Is going down there? Here, to start with.
Yes. I'm sure, and I just would like to go on record as saying that there was some information that was shared today, I believe, on Lebanon Truth Seeker Facebook page, that shared these goals and also stated that board had not been working on goals for the last few years. And I'd like to address that because that's patently untrue, number one. And I think it disrespects our superintendents and the members of the board. I considered asking to move this discussion out to the first week of December so that the constituents in Burwick and North Burwick had the same kind of information that was presented to the Lebanon community. But I would defer to Josh to share his information, and I would ask the board member that shared that information on the Lebanon Truth Seeker page to please correct the misperception that the board has not been working on goals for the past few years.
I second that, and I.
Can we table that till later? Because it's not really part of this presentation.
I think it is. I, I think it's a more important conversation, actually.
Okay. So I definitely think we need to make sure we're respectfully dealing with each other and value for each other, but I, among this, I guess I want to, I had similar concerns, but I want to phrase it as a question because I don't know the answer. We, at the last meeting, discussed and with majority head nods, agreed that we would wait to table your presentation and your information shared until this meeting. We stand for our decisions as a board, norm number two. It was not an official vote. Our majority head nods agreeing for something, a we stand together, or because if so, then I am confused why you shared the goals that you weren't going to share until tonight, prior to tonight publicly, or whoever shared them. I don't know who shared them, but they were out on Facebook.
Yeah, no, I.
I guess I was confused about norms if we stand together with our decisions and we decided that, and then they were shared ahead of time. I found that confusing.
So I'll, I'll speak generally, right? I, Nancy, correct me if I'm, I, I think I shared the goals with you, was it, was it Friday last week? Because I don't remember the day, but I.
I saw them Monday.
Oh, Monday, okay, so Monday. Because I did say that I would share them with Nancy and, and as, as we can all, as we send things to Nancy, she has the right to send it out anytime she wants, right? That's, that's what we talked about. So that's what I did, right? I shared it with Nancy that way. We've been having a goals discussion for months, right? At this point, and so it's an important discussion, and it's one of those things, I think our responsibilities as board members, we speak into our constituents. That is something, we've had a clear mandate that way, right? We're supposed to do that. And so communicating, whether we are communicating in person, of which I certainly have done, communicating through email, which I certainly have done to members of North Burwick, in regards to saying, we're going to have a goals discussion. And I, I do hope people show up and listen in because, you know, not every board meeting that we have is like super, super impactful, right? It's impactful because we know it has budget implications and all those things. To us as board members, we have that responsibility. But when it comes to goals, which is going to impact reverberate every decision we make throughout the entire year, yeah, I'm definitely going to communicate and let people know we're having this discussion. And these are the goals that I intend to share. And so I don't, we're supposed to, we are supposed to do that, are we not?
Oh, I, if I had written the post, I would have said something more along the lines of, we've been working on these goals since September 17th or whatnot. They've been on the agenda almost every single week. We're going to make some serious decisions tonight, so if you'd like to be part of that conversation, we'd love for you to come, but just, I guess my question was something we specifically, we as a norm checker, agree that we would table until tonight and not share and have the information until tonight so we could make educated decisions, look at things side by side, but then they were shared publicly ahead of time. I felt that was a little counter, my personal opinion was that, didn't really, it didn't follow norm two, in my personal opinion, and I don't know. Bring that up.
So I, one, sharing the goals, I'm less concerned with you sharing a document of interest to you than I am about the whole issue that attorneys have talked to us multiple times about, that we act as a board. Your mandate actually, on this board, is not to serve your taxpayer, it's to do what's best for kids, just to clarify that. And number two, posting on social media, a couple of board members posting that the rest of the board has done nothing about looking at goals. And especially, you are specific about academic goals is sort of slanderous to the rest of us. It is not acting in, as a board collaboratively. It's vindictive and not helpful, I think, for having healthy board interaction. I'm offended. I want it corrected. I have spent, I don't know how many hours, the whole strategic plan development process, which neither person who posted that was at, we spent a lot of time talking about these things. Been on this board for years, and that's been talked about a lot, so making that claim is wrong and offensive, and I think it's not only that, but it just violates, we have had the attorney in here so many times to talk about what working as a board means. And operating on social media as one person or two-person and making blanket statements about what is or isn't happening violates that. And I don't, I mean, I'm at the point where I'm like, why, why bother? There are no norms left here. You sort of just, and every meeting turns into these circular conversations, so we aren't getting work done. We're spending an enormous amount of time with attorneys, money on that, we keep reviewing the same things and then going down the same path. I would love to spend more time talking about academics, but I feel like every meeting I come here dreading what the, what the attack is going to be, and this time I knew it before I got here, that we've already been attacked on Lebanon social media.
By one of our board members.
By two of our board members.
And the statement was untrue. Bottom line, it was not truthful.
Okay, Ali.
So just so everyone in the audience is aware of what exactly was said, there was one line saying, "On the agenda is a discussion of district goals, a discussion that has been missing for a number of years." That's the end of the critique of the board. Personally, I feel like we can move on past, I know it's not maybe an exact representation of what we've done, but this is America and they're allowed to say that they don't feel that this discussion has been adequately had for a number of years.
Adequately is one thing.
It's not true.
Well, it may not be true, but hindering this presentation tonight from happening and using more time on this, I just don't feel like is productive either. So I think we should let Josh get to what he's saying. I think we have a lot of really impressive.
Ali, you don't speak for me either.
I'm not.
And I'm getting a little tired of that because it's America, but this is a board, and we've spent a lot of money with the attorney talking to us and you supporting this, how do we have good, healthy board conversations? I don't think that is the case if people are going on social media and accusing other board members of not doing their job. So you want me to come in here and be positive about having this conversation? We have to backtrack first and correct the error that was posted on social media. And I do think, at one point when I was on this board, there was one person who was writing op-eds to newspapers, one board member. And we had to stop it because it became this, really, the focus, what if we had half eleven in here tonight? And we were defending that.
I mean, I think more community engagement, the better, so half eleven would be a good thing.
But if it's more community engagement, saying, why aren't you people doing your job?
It's our responsibility to show them that we are.
But we are, so why are we?
But if we're working continuously to model professional collaboration, then I think that we need to support each other and support the board.
I agree, but I.
I think that's the question.
All right, so I.
And I'm not saying, I don't think, I'm not saying we should table any of this. My question is purely, does, I guess, follow board norms? Does majority head nod, does that count as a we? And if so, then I think we need to be careful following what we decided whether we stand for it or not.
But we publicly take them off.
Moving forward.
We should publicly say that according to this, to Ali and that end of the table, we no longer want to have board norms. That it's a free country and people can post whatever they want, so, and publicly make that statement. Otherwise, I mean, this is not, it's, we're going to be constantly doing this.
Josh, I don't know how you feel about your constituents in Burwick who may not have gotten anything until you send a message out later today. I'm very concerned my constituents in Burwick did not.
Sorry, point of order. Nancy called on Josh. And so he has the floor. You, you, you over, you overtalked him. That is, that, that's, if you're talking norms, that was not a norm.
Some rules matter. Josh?
Thank you. I think tabling something doesn't mean we shouldn't talk about it and share information, right? As far as, you know, the accusation that I'm, I'm not for kids and only for constituents, no, I have a responsibility to want me to share the work that we're doing with our community because they're sending their children to our schools. We all have that, that responsibility. There was nothing nefarious about this. The whole year I've been on the board, last year, like, we did not have the conversation about annual goals. That is a fact, and we can admit that, and I think we can all head nod to that, we did not have an annual board goal discussion. Look at any of the minutes, look at any of the video, it did not happen last year. Now, I wasn't on the board any of the previous years. I don't know. I can only say that last year, that is, that is a fact. I want to have this conversation about board goals. I have been listening to board goals for three meetings now, four meetings now. I would love to be able to share this information and continue our discussion. I think that there is a clear, there's a clear difference in how we're interpreting what we say about whether tabling means you cannot talk about it and sealed lips until it's a board meeting. I do not think that that's appropriate. I don't believe that that's transparent. And so I understand that there's a difference of point of view on that, and I respect a difference point of views. I'm not out here to make anyone upset. Every time that, if we talk about lawyers, every time the lawyer has come, the lawyer has not said, I can't do, they actually said, you were elected to share your opinions, not just. not just at a board meeting publicly, but to share your opinions in the community." That was shared during one of the workshops with the lawyer. Everything that I've done, and then publicly that way, I would love to just be able to share this presentation. That's, that's really what I'd like to do. There's a lot of people here who may be interested in this. Love to get to that point.
Before I take you three, can we at least hear Josh's presentation? Because the administration needs to know how to move forward. Whether we're gonna do his, whether we're gonna do this, we're gonna combine them. Can we let Chris read presentation and then talk after that with questions?
So long, loving it out, one second here. All right, so Noble 2030, inspired and empowered. I, I love the two words, inspired and empowered. And I feel that they describe our district and our initiatives, just as a, as a board, really good. We should be, we are inspired to, to work together and hopefully empowered to make a difference in our community. The very first goal, which you see on your first slide, is this one, by June 2025, this is a, a proposed goal. And I know this being said is, is my goal, please understand, this is not Josh Taber's goal. I, I, I have worked with Nancy Sewell specifically, just because we have a shared interest in some of these things. So it's not Josh Taber's goals. And I've spoken to many other people who, who have, who have shared an interest in these as well, so. But by June 2025, the school community, this includes admin, teachers, staff, students, parents, caregivers, everybody in our community, will have a simple and clear definition of acceptable student behavior. In order to provide a consistent environment where teachers can teach and students can learn. I feel strongly that, that we need to clearly define this so that the daily chaos that is happening in our classrooms that, that we hear about often is reduced, not just a little bit, but drastically reduced. And then our teachers in that, in those environments where they, where they are certainly taking less of their time to deal with student behaviors, they are spending much more of their time challenging students intellectually and, and certainly teaching at, at a much higher level, right? So I think that that, that kind of environment, that's a rich and strong and powerful learning environment, inspires students to also achieve to that, that higher level. So, you know, with, with a, with a environment that is, that is setting a, a standard for, for learning and how we act in a learning environment, and that, that's important, it brings us to our second goal. And our second goal says, by June 2026, eighty percent of students in each grade, kindergarten through eighth grade, will be on or above grade level in reading and math as measured by an exclusive criterion reference assessment. Now, I, I'm, I'm, this brings up a number of questions, I'm sure. Some of them might be, why do we need such a specific goal on reading and math? Why does this goal specify an exclusive criterion reference assessment? Why did we pick eighty percent? Why June 26 instead of June 25? So the obvious one, why, why June 26 and not June 25 is, well, we're over halfway through the school year, this school year now. And, and we're still working on the goals. We don't actually have a criterion reference, an exclusive criterion reference test in this district as of yet. We actually don't have a criterion reference baseline in this district. Yet, I think setting a goal of eighty percent by June 26 communicates the urgency that we have without setting an impossibility. And let me talk about that impossibility. When you look here, this is the percent of Maine students proficient or advanced on the NAEP. The NAEP is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It is a national criterion reference test. It's also known as our nation's report card and it's been going on for several decades here. According to this data, not this chart, but there's another chart which shows the ranking. Over the past thirty years, Maine has dropped from first, ranked first or second in the nation in education to the average rank, most recently, 2022, of thirty-sixth. We, we find this unacceptable. And it's a call to action requiring us to set rigorous and focused goals, right? That will ensure students are once again receiving top-notch educational experience. You know, that's, that's really what's about, so this is, in, in, in case we think that this, this doesn't really apply to Noble. If we look at NWEA data, NWEA data in Noble and in Maine, if you take the average of Maine and the average in Noble, the, the medians are virtually the same number. I think they're off like one scale point. They're virtually the same. So this may be a pretty clear indication of where MSAD sixty. And without another exclusive criterion references, it's hard to judge that. I'm talking about criterion referenced assessments and norm reference assessments. I think it's important to at least give everyone an idea of what, what it means. Criterion reference is like the MCAS that happened before COVID in Maine. It's the NAEP, right, National Assessment of Educational Progress. Another example would be the Iowa Test of Basic Skills. Many of people in the audience, I see they're older folks, when I was in elementary school, I remember taking the Iowa Test of Basic Skills. And so maybe that's a familiar criterion reference assessment. They measure against grade level concepts and skills and they aim for mastery, that's what they measure. What, to what grade level are, do you have it mastered, right? Norm reference, on the other hand, they compare, they compare students to other students, students to students, not students to grade level content, but students to students. And it's meant to rank students. Who's doing better than other students, who's doing worse, right? So an article by Research Case states that the major reason for using norm reference assessment is to produce a rank order. It is very useful in selecting relatively high and low achievers among students. However, an obvious disadvantage of norm reference assessment is that it gives little information about what a test taker, test taker actually knows or can do. And it cannot measure students' progress or learning outcomes and determine the effectiveness of certain curriculums. So this is our district, 2023 grades three through eight, NWEA through year data. So the most recent data that we have access to. And you can see we have two columns there, NWEA, ELA, which is essentially reading, English Language Arts is what ELA stands for, and NWEA math. And I've color coded it, blue, this is a typical color coding when it comes to NWEA. Above expectations is blue, this is the percent of our students in grades three through eight who are in that category of above state expectations, meaning expectations is in green. And, and you can see that we have approximately sixty-two or so percent at or above state expectations in reading and approximately forty-two percent in, in math, right? So I want you to just think on this, if our students are meeting state expectations and we're comparing them to state expectations, which are ranked thirty-sixth in the nation, and maybe aren't those students in our district performing below average? And it's something to, to at least consider, that, that idea. I want to compare, we, we do give one other test in our district that's not norm referenced. It's actually called the COGAP. It's a cognitive abilities test. And what you're looking at here is, it's, it's broken out to stay nines. Stay nines is the test that scores are broken into nine categories, right? And you can see the, the labeling of the nine categories being superior, well above average and above average. So that's essentially exceeding states, right? That's, that's above average. We can, we can certainly say above average, well above average, superior, certainly above average. And the green represents above average and the yellow being below average, low and very low, right? And on the COGAP, which is actually statistically a very good sample of our district, that includes all third graders and fifth graders, again, from 2023. And this abilities ranked test showed that eighteen point one percent of our students should be exceeding state expectations. And sixty-two point two percent of our students should be meeting state expectations. Now, this does not say that they, they should be reaching that achievement necessarily, it just says that they have the ability to do that. It measures three areas, I should say that VQN, there are three components to the test, a verbal, a quantitative and a non-verbal, which is kind of a logic, figurative type area. So I think it's important to look at these together. Let me carry, carry, I'll show you one and then another, hopefully we put together, right? And what you see here is the COGAP says that our district has the ability. Eighteen point one percent of students have ability to be achieving or above expectations. Yet we're not there in reading or math. And that sixty-two percent of our students have the ability to meet expectations, yet we're not there, right? So, but what does the COGAP actually tell us when we look at this, right? Is that we actually, we, we don't know why our students are not achieving at this level. We don't, right? And, and we don't know actually what level they might be achieving at, whether it's as a district as we make decisions or individually. But I think it's important that we're looking at data. And that we are data savvy as a board. As a matter of fact, the habits and characteristics of high achieving districts versus low achieving districts, these are three. This is off the National School Board Association, eight characteristics of effective boards. And here are four bullets that apply. It's that boards in high achieving districts are more likely to engage in goal setting and monitoring their progress. In other words, setting a few specific goals that are monitored at such a high level. High level being, we talk about it every single meeting, the progress that we're making on those goals. And when you have too many goals, you really can't have that ongoing discussion every single meeting. And so I think picking a few and, and, and talking about those few, that board members are increasingly data savvy. That we share data, we talk about data, we interpret data, we understand what data means, we ask for more data, right, in everything that we do. That board members possess detailed knowledge of their district, including initiatives to jumpstart, right? What are we doing to move our students forward specifically? And what are the impact of those individual initiatives on a regular basis? And then last but not least, this actually ties into what we were talking about before I got started, is that board members have crafted a working relationship with superintendents, teachers and administrators based on mutual respect, collegiality and a joint commitment to student success. So it is my hope that, that joint commitment to student success allows us to adopt these two goals as our annual goals, to inspire our work together and empower the students for success no matter their pathway of choice. What say you? Thank you.
So Josh, I'll be with the Craig. So the Iowa is not exclusively criterion referenced. Is it norm referenced as well as criteria? So if we're looking for an assessment that is, it's like criterion reference, let me, let's, let's figure that out. Because that's not, that's not one of them. And that right off the hook. So we just need to be thinking about that. The assessment aspect of it is, is kind of a big deal. We utilize a lot of assessments in our district. We feel honestly criterion referenced assessments are really the best means at our classroom level because our teachers do know where our kids are and how they're doing. And then criterion referenced assessments on a daily basis. The NWAs are a little more, those are norm referenced. One's on criteria as well these days with the state testing. So that is something that there is, there is always the question of, do students do as well on those one-off administered tests, right? We, we know that that's always a question, like, how are we able to do when we're taking that NWA when they just need to get through it, that kind of thing. But I'm looking for, I'm looking for insight in terms of like that true assessment that it seems to be held up, like there's one assessment to do this. And I haven't, I haven't, we, we've been doing, since these conversations have been ongoing, Shannon, Dr. Guiger has been doing a lot of research to find that it's was those criterion referenced. And then I would like to say that there is a lot of, we do sort of a tremendous amount of assessment throughout the district. So I want to know how that plays into this conversation and what information needs to be shared with the board in order for you to feel like assessing is actually taking place and that we do know where our students are. And I, I'm, I'm, like, that's, that's a big conversation.
All right, Ali. All right, first of all, thank you to all the students that are in the audience. I can tell which one of you are engaged and that's very, very cool of you all. And I hope you don't feel like we're saying you're not performing in school because that's not what we're saying at all. We definitely believe in you guys and no one's saying that. So I tend to ramble, so I wrote down my thoughts prior to this meeting about this goal. So when I first heard about proposed goals for eighty percent of students achieving grade level reading, K through eight, I was honestly excited and looking forward to it. Eighty percent sounds so good. We have the smartest kids and obviously the best teachers, so it should be easy, right? But then I did some research to see if my initial feelings could be supported. And I just feel it's important to do some educating tonight for any members of the public, especially you students that may have questions too. So first, I think it's important to discuss where this stress on standardized tests came from in history, which is why you're all here. In 2002, No Child Left Behind was implemented under President Bush with shockingly bipartisan support. When's the last time we read that? This gave the states the responsibility of forcing the children to achieve high test scores to determine school funding. Those who achieved high received more funding, those who achieved low received less. Sounds backwards, right? After years of reports from teachers and admins nationwide, it was deemed that No Child Left Behind was, quote, draining creative approaches from classrooms, consuming instructional time and creating undue stress on teachers and students. In response, in 2015, under President Barack Obama, another bipartisan act was passed which allowed broader state-driven accountability of student achievement to be based on a wider net than just tests alone. For example, I wrote really small here, hold on. For Maine, this includes graduation rates, attendance, student growth and engagement and other metrics that are similar to that. As well as more control over curriculum from state to state. For example, this allowed Florida to drop Common Core standards. So this led me to my final position. I do believe education and academics are important. We need to focus our time on all of these areas, however, which I feel is what has been given to us by the board. They really talk about community engagement, school safety, high quality resources and pathways to success. And all of these areas need to be addressed. And I don't think that's too many five, that's all right. But I think going back in time to a process that we bipartisantly agreed does not work for schools is not the move that we want to make as a board. A focus on high test achievement is burdensome on teachers without comprehensive benefits. I believe by increasing student engagement, especially at the high school level, we're gonna turn out more well-rounded, educated, empathetic and curious adults into the world and improve all of the indicators of success that we are responsible to provide to the state and federal government. It's not a question of if our kids can reach this, we know they can. But it's just, is the investment of time for our student, our teachers worth the payoff? So when it comes to Maine, we are following a more comprehensive route to funding, which is based on, sorry, I'm losing it, the Maine Comprehensive Assessment System. So we're talking about the Maine Comprehensive Assessment System, which is what we use to be, you know, responsible to the federal government for funding. I think we need to keep all of the drivers of that in our forefront and not just these two.
I have one question. Shannon, is there anything you want to add about assessments and in your search?
I haven't really come across the winner. I also think that we want to be really cognizant that we are not replicating efforts that are already in place. I think we have a comprehensive array of assessments that tell us how our students are learning and to, more importantly, how to inform our instruction. We're not just focused on the scores, we want to know what can we take from that data to improve what we're doing. We have formatted, we have summated, we have assessments that meet federal requirements. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole about the state assessment, but we do have criterion reference scores that also offer norm reference in terms of how our students are doing nationally. We have the grade levels, we're inundated with assessment. Basically for the month of May, and they barely teach because they're doing some of these stuff. So if there is an assessment that can offer us a different point that is very different from what we already have, then that is definitely something we're, we're comfortable. But I think that can replicate things that we already have in place. The value is there. Really, I mean, Iowa, I think that's changed now, not Iowa test, failed the Iowa assessments. I've designed a norm reference test. Some that you think are criterion referenced, really are in terms of diagnostics. I think our teachers know where our students are. One-off assessments are of accurate representation of what a student.
Thank you very much.
May I just add in that they're, on average, our teachers are.
on average, our teachers are giving assessments.
A year?
A year. And that does not count the, the exit tickets for the understanding of the lesson. Um, and to the, to the greater point, as a board, you had four presentations last year. We already had a couple this year and we still need to keep that up so that you can become more, um, involved in that process of several years ago, every single school. Um, pay, you know, pay up to the middle school right now. We have data walls and Shannon showed, Dr. Swiger showed some of those data walls, uh, previously, but every student we, we track every single assessment from those students and then at least three times a year, more than that, but at three times a year. The team gets together and looks at everything and every student. And we talk about, you know, where they're at and how to program and how to move ahead and how, you know, how to change up, you know, what we're doing so that our students can make the amount of growth, um, academically that they can. And right now, I, you know, all of the elementary schools between last week and this week and, and Tuesday, next Tuesday are involved in that process. And any principal that you talk to will know where their students are, any teacher that you talk to will know where their students are and where they need to be. And, um, you know, it's just, we have a lot of information.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the part that's missing here for me is the teacher involvement in this. I, I lived through, I appreciate Alison, that history lesson because I, I sat on this board through that tenure where we were buried in standardized testing for students and teachers literally felt like they had no opportunity to teach. And that their input was not valued, that all they were doing was teaching to test. So I, and I know, I know I've always known exactly where my kids have stood. I now know exactly where my grandkids stand and they're not even at the same school. We had them for dinner and my 10-year-old uh, North Berwick granddaughter was discussing with my six-year-old first grader from Hussey, where their reading levels were and arguing about how that had been assessed. And that to me is a remarkable understanding of, of their own position. So I know that the students know little, I, you know, parents, I don't know. My issue, and I'll, I'll be brief then, my mid-issue with the 80% is we do have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we still have a high percentage of students with I E Ps.
Yes.
Do we compare? So I, I think that number would need to be discussed because that has been a challenge over the years that we have students who may.
And does that figure in here? Every student in, um,
Well, if you look at.
Unless they have an I E P or another testing setup.
Those were goals proposed by Josh, so I would refer to that. If you look at our pathways to success, um, on the last page, where the smart goals are, it says by June 2026, 75% of third grade students who have been enrolled in the district's and state government will achieve grade level proficiency on the benchmark assessment and the N W E A. We added that in term of discussion of the, the board. Um, that does take into account that it's, it's a stepping stone, right? Like to get to our end result. It's manageable in the, in the fact like it's achievable. And, um, it takes into account that all of the population that we have. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have? Oh. Josh, I guess, and then you.
Um, so, uh, a few things. So, um, that's no shot of the Fionn came out in 2002. The main learning results were done in the 1990s, if we're talking history, right? And Maine was top of the nation with their main learning results and they assessed the main learning results. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think there was only one test. And how many tests do we have today? Right? I'm not advocating for adding more and more testing. I'm actually advocating just add one really good test. Right? Whatever that is, I think to Sue's point, she was asking, let's have the conversation. I agree. Let's have the conversation. I'm awful. Look, I am a teacher. I'm awful formative assessment. This is a big difference between formative assessments, summative assessments being unit, you know, or theme thematic type assessments. And then a standardized assessment that measures a whole district. Um, so, you know, when the main learning results were around and we were assessing that with a criteria and reference assessed, by criteria and reference assessment, Maine is at the top of the nation. Um, you know, so I think that's important to, to, to realize. Um, the other thing is, is we, we're talking a lot about teachers and students and, and I, I'm a teacher myself. I, I know teachers know their students well. I, yes, absolutely. I, I would challenge anyone to ask me about my students and where they're at and what they're doing. I'd be happy to discuss them. I'd rather they in the room when I'm discussing them. But anyways, my point is made. The question is, what, what test, criteria reference tests are we using to evaluate our curriculum? Right? That's the other piece. Right? Our students are experiencing a curriculum that they should be tier one, right? Tier one, 80% of the students receiving, um, core curriculum should be on grade level. But that doesn't appear to be the case. And so it's just, there's a, there's, we're talking about a lot of different things. And I recognize there's a lot of different pieces of this and we are not going to solve all those individual pieces tonight. I understand that. What I am saying is we shouldn't be spending the majority of our May testing. I'd love to just test once and let the teachers teach. Let them teach a fantastic, a rigorous curriculum. Right? Let them go because the teachers do know what they're doing. They're, they're wonderful. Right? Let's trust them to do that. Let's give them a darn good curriculum to do that with. Let's intervene correctly based on the data that we have. Let's, let's reduce the amount of testing and just identify one excellent test. And that would not include, and I want to be clear, it doesn't include interventions, right? 80% of our students should take just one test. The other 20%, depending on what their need is, may need several tests. So, um, I just think that we, I'd love to see us just be focused as a board. And I understand that there's four areas of our, of our strategic plan, but what's been talked about as a board is four to five goals under each one of those. Those areas, we're talking 16 or so different goals. And how do we talk about 16 goals over the course of a year? And how do we measure that? I mean, that's a huge challenge for you, our administration to bring in data on a monthly basis on where we're making progress on these goals. So I, I, I will let that, that stand what it is.
Okay, Alex?
Um, all right. So I think it would be awesome if we could do one test that encapsulates the children's aptitude, knowledge, everything, but I think that's a wish at this point, but I don't think is feasible. I think when we were in no child left behind and we were on top, that was due to extreme pressure to perform to that test.
Right. It came down, the data says we came down.
Well, on your chart here, it shows after 2002 with no child left behind, we went up. But
Literally.
Right. And then we grew up until 2015, when you see we start going down. But being at the top on paper, when you have administrators talking to their legislators about the fact that they are not able to educate their kids, does not mean we're on top. It means we're on top on paper. So that's an important distinction. There's a reason why in 2015 they made that change that was supported in a bipartisan way. Um, so in doing that and creating the E S S A, they gave states the rights to have a more broad picture of their students, which is where we are right now. Um, so I agree that there has to be a balance between so many evaluations, but I think one is a pipe dream. Um, and I think 80%, I mean, I trust Audra with 75% honestly. Um, if she thinks that's reasonable, then I trust her that that's probably a more achievable goal than what we could set. Um, well, I guess I'm just reiterating my point, I guess. I think all, I think we need more education on what exactly we send to the state when we're reporting our success benchmarks. What exactly are we sending? Are we sending all of this information? Are we sending how many children got expelled this year? Um, and how does that correlate to like the funding we receive? Um, so I think more education around that, when we're talking about goals this year might be very helpful for myself.
I'm just going to do, you guys have a, I'm just going to make one more comment. I think these ones that, that, uh, Audra and Sue did are great. I do agree that's too many. Um, I'm wondering if we could pick one out of each category and it might be more attainable. Um, which one, you know, we can discuss. Um, I, I think 80% is too high personally. Um, but maybe we should be aiming high and I don't know.
Goals are goals for a reason.
Um, no, I was just going to comment about the multiple because I was looking at them to see. And I know we talked about different organizations having different structures. Um, but while I do on paper, I'm like, wow, this is a lot of goals. It's a lot. But when I was looking deeper at each section, it's not like every single one of these goals affects teachers. And like there, I feel as though they're reasonably diversified among different groups of individuals. That it's not like, yeah, like, I know, like at my work with my accounting department has five goals this year. Sales department has seven goals. You know what I mean? So it's like, while the company may have 15 to 20 goal, like there's only five affecting my department, only one of those on a plea affects me at the end of the day, kind of thing. So when we look at our school district as a whole, um, I do kind of feel like they're spread out and there's not a whole lot of like, like these goals are like really like, oh my gosh, like the great teacher at this school, you have to do all this.
You have the goal and I think the bulleted things are just ways to get to the goal.
Yeah.
Not actually specific, they're steps.
Right. Yeah.
So I think what we as a board need to do is decide which direction we want to go in. Um, do we want to go with the ones based on the choose your parent plan? Would you like to do the ones Josh presented? Do we want to do a combination somehow?
It looks like you could look at pathways to success, look at the goals that, that Josh has presented, look at our goals. Merge them. I mean, I don't think we presented that. It felt like we couldn't achieve them, although Nancy, I always. Um, so it's just looking at, in, in my opinion, it's looking at those. Saying there's a reminder there.
And maybe including that evidence portion so that when we do go at the end of the year, you can like, be like, hey, look, there is no evidence of this law and we did have to be, you know? Not a project, but, uh, you know? Yes, reflection. So you, oh, Nancy first and I'll come back to you.
I just wanted to point out that according to the, an article printed in the Maine Morning Star in nine, 2024. And I believe the Maine Morning Star is printed as the government newspaper. A Maine state assessments change every few years resulting in data that can't be compared. That has been the issue for a long, long time. We've had, well, I don't know what we've had. That was in New Hampshire. But we had the, the M cap, the kneecap, the, um, I think everybody did the kneecap for a while. We had the N W E A, we had a couple of years, we didn't do any testing during COVID. Um, or used, so we don't have data that we could use to set a trend line. And a trend line is simply that this is where we are, this is where we need to get to, where are we on that trend line? And we need to work toward it. Um, but the also said, um, eighth graders average score in both reading and math were the lowest that we've ever seen in about three decades. This is according to the NAEP, based on the NAEP. Since NAEP started testing, fourth grade reading scores were also at an all-time low and math scores were the lowest they'd been since 2000. Now, I know this school works hard. I've listened, I've heard, I haven't been part of it. As I said, I taught in New Hampshire. But we can't keep doing and testing the way we've been because we're not gaining. With that trend line, if we had one, it's not closing, getting up there to that 80% proficiency. It's still just running kind of on a parallel to where we want to be. It's a, it's a very, it's just not, we don't even have a trend line. I don't even want to talk about it, but I think we need to look at what we've been doing. The, the testing that we do. I don't even know how the teachers have time to process all the testing that they're doing, let alone make decisions based on that test. There's a lot of testing. And again, I was just stuff I've been exposed to or shown and, and read about, but one test, and it doesn't, I don't know what test it is. No one test is going to give us all the information we want. What we're looking for is something, it's morning star, the morning, whatever.
Morning star.
Thank you. Morning star says, we can't keep changing the test. We have to commit to a test. And I think S A D 60 can commit to a test. We've got the people on staff here that know how to figure out what test that should be. Commit to a test, commit to using it for a number of X amount of years to see where it takes us. Not looking to see on a criterion-based test. We get rid of them because kids didn't do well on them. We had to go to something different. What we're looking for is to see what they're doing based on grade level standards. And then figure out what we need to do to get them to close that gap so that they're grade level. We don't want to be grade level in a failing state. We want to be grade level based on our learning. Help me with that because they're the main learning results, main real learning results. We want to know that our kids can put a comma between a compound sentence. We want to know that our kids can recognize the difference between a direct object and an indirect object. We want to know that they can function in math at a proficient level. They are not, they're 50% of our kids, 47% of our kids are on grade level in math right now in the district, according to the N W V A's. I implore people, we don't want to make it harder. We just want to set a goal that we can measure and look at and study and see what do, what does the administration need to do, what do the teachers need to do to make that change and grow? That's what I had to say.
Did you have your hand up?
Oh, I thought. I did. Okay. I did. Yeah. I, I think I'm confused now because I thought we were looking for more tests, but I, I totally agree that less tests is better. But aren't we also bound by the state requires? So we don't have that, fortunately, the flexibility to say, we don't like your test, we're just going to do one we like. So we're, that's been the frustration for decades that I've been on this board is that if you pick one you like, you still have to do all these others. And that gets overwhelming for teachers who then don't feel like they have the opportunity to teach. So I, I, I support, just to be clear, the strategic development plan that we've been working on. I do think some, maybe you want to, I liked Ally's idea of adding maybe some level of just check-in and evidence base to that smart goals piece. Um, I think we could even do that with the others, just noting when things happen and when they get done would maybe be helpful and instructive. Um, but I think it is also super important that we engage teachers and that teachers are comfortable coming to meetings and not feeling like we're telling them they're failing all of our kids. And that nobody knows where their students are. I have felt that that's been the message that the community is getting out of these conversations so far. I'm hearing you tonight saying that's not what, what, what is intended. Uh, but I think it is kind of felt that way. And I think we've sort of overlooked in some of these conversations, the high percentage of I E P students that we have and how that impacts that 75% versus 80. I don't want those kids left behind.
So, um, from Nancy, what you were saying about wanting to see growth in the pathways to discuss smart goals, the second one addresses, we'll increase the percentage of students meeting our state expectations on the main through the year assessment by literacy by 10%. So does that satisfy you?
No.
Okay. What would?
80%?
Well.
I mean, no.
10% would put us at 75.
Yeah. I think, I think if you look at where we are right now, can I answer that question?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Then I guess I could, and from what I have researched and looked at, we are pretty much at seven, I think 73% in reading in Lebanon, 70% in reading in Hussy. And I do not have the number in North Berwick because it's posted by fourth and third and fourth grade. But I suspect, oh, they were low. They were 68, third and fourth. So we're right close. I just, I think if we're going to go 75%, I'd do it by 2025. Make the rest of this year really push. But how many, do we have, I had a question. Can I ask? Do we have to do the N W E A in the winter? That's not mandatory, is it?
Through year.
You have to do the through in the spring, but do we have to do the winter one?
But we use it as just a local data point.
Right. But we have so many data points with all of the other assessments. If you wanted to get rid of, I know the teachers hate doing it. And I also wonder how much teachers' times are extremely limited and the N W E A has got a lot of information. I wonder, sometimes it's very hard to even make use of it. So could we, and we have the end year, the target growth at the end of the year is part of the main through. I'm just want, I'm not saying we should, but what I did want to say is again, what we've been doing and how we've been doing it is not making the gains we want to see. We need to really look at what we're doing. And maybe rethink. Again, that's why that 80% is a really eye opener. So what, what can we do? Can we do this? How do we do it? What do we need to do? It's a challenge and, and I know that, but I think it's a challenge worth trying to attempt.
Okay.
Okay.
Statement. Yep. I, part of this too, as we're going through this and having this conversation, I'm wondering how much people are factoring in the impact of COVID.
Yeah, that's my concern.
In changing data, because I teach, I teach at college level and the impacts are filtering into us. So I, I think we're going to see changes coming, but I, I think. But I, I think the data that we're looking at was heavily impacted by COVID.
Okay, last time. Go.
The decline of, in the, at the state level began way before COVID, so that.
No, no, yeah.
Impacting it. And if I can, I think, and somebody can correct me on this one, but I think our special. Needs population is less than twenty percent in the district, isn't it? So that would be your below, well below. Um, low. At that, and then I think on the. Cogat, it said it was right around that level. And so I think we're, we're right. That cogat is pretty, seems to be pretty accurate. In giving us that information. So again, we're looking at eighty percent who are within the broad average range and above the average range. Eighty percent of our population should be able to make. Grade level expectations. We just don't know what those grade level expectations.
All right. So what does the board want to do?
Oh, sorry. No, I'm sorry. Um, forty percent of our students incoming kindergarten had a preschool program. The other students that came in for kindergarten did not have any program. Um, of those students, many of them did not, were not able to recognize letters, know how to spell their name. Know what an uppercase or a lowercase letter was, know the difference between a number and a letter. So we have students coming in at a wide range. So while we have special education students that are hovering between sixteen, seventeen, nineteen percent, depending on the year. We have a vast majority of our students that don't, aren't afforded the ability to have pre K. And you cannot discount that impact coming into kindergarten. And yes, we do so much in kindergarten and our kindergarten teachers are amazing, but it takes more than a year. To, to get, get those students. A preschool and a kindergarten program to get them to first grade, to second grade and to third grade. And I want to be really clear here. Under pathways to success for, for us. The seventy five percent is not a stopping place. That is not a place where we're saying, okay, this is the best we can do because we know. That we're going to get our students to where they need to be. This is a smart goal. So a smart goal is a measurable period, a, a goal that's over a measurable period of time. And the seventy five percent was a place where we felt, looking at our entire population, was a realistic goal. That's all I wanted to clarify for you. Because yes, we have the special education population, but students coming in, educational disadvantage.
But yeah. I'm sorry.
Last time.
Which is the other piece of this that we haven't talked about, which is parent, family participation in the district. I mean, it.
We don't, we don't control that, right? We don't.
I, you know, can I finish?
More opportunities.
So exactly, and we have to because we can't control that, but it has an impact on where we're at.
All right. So I, I'm going to, do we want to make, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a.
On. After, we're going to follow. Who do you want to handle this?
Make a motion that we adopt the strategical plans that we've been working on with potentially. Formatting that allows for including evidence.
A second.
Well, using that as sort of a rough draft, maybe honing it down a little bit. Would that somebody second it?
And.
Uh. Any discussion, especially from people I haven't heard from? Look at my habit.
And I want to speak specifically to the goal.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Um, my concern is that we're only measuring students that started in Old One Kindergarten. I would, uh. I'm a board member for all students in the district. I would at least like to see, make the suggestion that it's all students. We should care about all students and measure all students in our district and have it count towards a percentage.
How, where are we leaving them out? That's.
Well, we, yeah.
That was one of them.
We want anybody who's started in the.
Aspect of our community.
Oh, I got you. Okay. Yeah, that's a good step.
Yep. Well, they wouldn't not be tested.
Right.
Right. Just maybe not figure into that.
Right.
That one piece.
Okay.
If someone comes. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Anybody else? Jerry.
Um. If, if, if we're going to adopt these, I really would like it stripped down to one. One per category because I.
Well, like I was saying, I think it is one and I think all of these feed into how we do that one. See what I mean? I mean, we can rewrite, it can be rewritten a different way maybe, but.
Yeah, because these are, it doesn't feel like that. It doesn't feel like just one goal. It feels like a whole lot of little teeny tiny pieces that you have to try and make work into a puzzle.
I think those are the tactics that feed up into the goal and how you achieve the goal.
Yeah, the steps.
Get to that goal.
Right. Those are the.
Want to chart us with the, with taking. This draft that we have and making it more succinct. And add in.
The evidence.
The evidence. Understanding the um. Question about the third. The kiddos that have been here the whole entire time, well, we can adjust that as well and bring it. I mean, I, I want to, we really want to look forward, but I want to make sure that we have our. You know, take into consideration everything.
Well, maybe we can change the motion to seeing, uh, uh. What's the word I want? Consolidated, um. More, a little bit more succinct on the, the, these from the strategic plan. Your point, Nancy, though, I think there's one goal, that each of these is one goal and, and what those bullets are, are just. If we take those out, then how do you achieve the goal? I mean, those are just, you could say, look at the goals separately or look at the actual steps to achieve. Because those are things that the whole community that came together with hundreds of people, those, these sort of represent what they asked for. If we remove them, we're sort of undoing the work that all of those people did. Which is kind of, I, I'm confused by how we would demonstrate what our efforts are to achieve the goal if we take those out.
Some of these are a little bit. Sources. Down into one or two goals because if you look at. This smart goal for the twenty five, twenty six. Right, that's pretty clear. And then underneath that is how we do it. And you don't need that to do that here. But. And the same with honestly, Pathways to Success. It's the goals that, you know, we agreed to. Um. The other two are a little bit harder. Because they're a more broad. Full safety training system looks great. So those are, those are a little bit. I don't, I don't know how to like.
Well, how do you quantify? Right, yes. Okay, I'm almost going to be rewritten saying, uh, with this goal may be reached by one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, whatever. Put it that way.
They're actually pretty. Um. Able to be implemented in terms of like, this is what they do. Let's get it very clear. My favorite will do this.
Yeah, it's kind of like Lauren was saying, if your company gives you, I just went through the same. Or today, you give, you're given goals, but then asked how you're going to achieve them. We're doing both. We've got the goal and then how we're going to achieve it.
Um, Kelly and I are going to say the same thing. Uh, like I think that we can take our goal and kind of do. What York did where like they have like one header goal and then they have like a table with multiple things listed. Um. And then this general comment, I wanted to add, when looking at these, it is noticeable, like. Nobody has one or two goals for the ones that were shared with us. So I don't think we're out of line, um, moving forward with this as far as like. Norms. Um, but then also like, that was kind of one of the questions I really asked or kind of want. I guess rhetorically ask, um. Really, what was the point of, of, of everyone working on the strategic plan? Was it so we could create board goals or was it just so people could?
Spend a lot of time for the next, whatever years.
Right, and so the plan would be. That these. Get to, so goals would be, uh, yeah, okay. That was my thought. I was like, wait, why did, why was this created? It was really to. Create our goals to move forward out of the district to do, accomplish these things. Okay. Thank you.
So who made the motion to begin?
I did.
Do you want to amend that somehow or do we just want to just say? Do we want to see another, a second draft or third or fifth or whatever draft this is?
The motion being to move forward with. Strategic.
Goal.
Goals and maybe with.
Edit the format, yes.
precise and understandable.
Evidence.
Evidence.
Okay.
A second.
So that's the motion. Already clear. Any further discussion unless you've already spoken twelve times?
I'm sorry.
Long day.
Um. Twenty three is my card on you, Nancy. I said twenty three is my card on you. Sorry.
I've been here since four.
Um. Ally seconded it.
So it was Peg and then Ally seconded.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then. All in favor of the motion on the floor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you to Josh for all of his research and work. Same thing to Audrey and Sue and the hours they put in on this. It's been a lot. Okay, moving on. Combination of the food service director.
Okay, we have, um, we are presenting David Vargas, um, as our next, um, school nutrition director. So we had, I'll just kind of go through the process with you and then talk a little bit about the interviews. That we have with David. So we had over thirty applicants for this position. We interviewed seven, because people, seven, um, qualified. Um, applicants for that. From there, we moved to three candidates for a final round. So our final round of interviews included three managers, kitchen managers, two principals, the business manager, the administrative assistant to the food service director. Elva was there representing from the board and Sue and I were there. Um, so we had the, those interviews, um. And then, of course, we, you know, went through the reference checking. So, um, on David Vargas, as you can see, he currently owns three restaurants. Um, he has quite a storied, um. Positively storied, you know, life in, in food. And really, it has been his life in food. Um, he began, um, when he was eleven years old, his parents had a restaurant and he's been in the restaurant business and all the way through. About six or seven years ago, he started volunteering at the Kittery School Department, um, in their school nutrition department. And he did a lot of farm to table work with them. He did a lot of, um, giving back to the community, a lot of events with the school. Um, when the food service director from Kittery needed to take a, a medical leave, the superintendent Eric Waddell asked David to step in. Um, for her while, um, she was, um, out. And, um, Eric spoke very, very highly of his skill set and, um, he currently oversees a hundred, about a hundred eighty staff. In his restaurants and, uh, so we feel like he can really have a good grip on our person, you know, the personnel, because we've got different kitchens and different things going on in different places. And we feel he has a really good handle on that. Um, if approved this evening, he would be able to begin in January. And Abby Hubbell, our current director, is able to stay until right before December break. So there wouldn't really be a lapse of, um. A, a director in that position. So this was a unanimous out of the interview, uh, the, the, um, the panel. This was a unanimous. Um, move forward to the board and Elva wanted me to say that she wholeheartedly, she's not here, but she wanted to say that she wholeheartedly approved like this, this candidate. So.
I have a question. Is he going to continue to run four restaurants and the food service?
So he is still going to be on, on owners, an owner in some of the, 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 the restaurants. But he said that the chefs that they have right now and everything, he's ready to step back. He wants to spend some time on a more, um. Schedule so that he can see his family. He's working about eighty, ninety hours a week, midnight on, you know. You know, food service, you know, like we know, right? Like it's hard work. Yeah. So he, um, has people in place. Um, he has a good, you know, process to, to transition and, uh, so that's his, his piece.
Motion to.
A second.
Oh, I'm. Yeah, I think it's awesome.
All those in favor?
Really creative approach to.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Uh, all those in favor? Opposed?
Hey.
Super excited.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yes, super exciting.
Okay, employment.
Okay, we not have any, um, other employment other than, um, the school nutrition director. There's good no hires or resignations or anything at this time.
Superintendent update.
Okay, a couple of things. So we found out. About eleven o'clock this afternoon, a morning, like it feels like this afternoon, that we were, um, selected to receive the, the pre K grant. Not know how much money was going to be receiving. They have not given us that information yet. However, they sent three districts received the grant. We were.
In the state. Oh, wow. Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah. It's very exciting and they're going to be giving us further information. Um, of course, this doesn't mean that you have to accept. Obviously, you know, we have to find out how much, you know, what, what the state is going to be offering us for funds and how, you know, how that impacts our budget and everything. But I wanted to just share that because it's very exciting. Long, long time coming, but very exciting.
Yeah, and it's so relevant to the conversations we've just had. That, that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been a same piece for us. Exciting.
That is, and then a couple of other things. Mark Hubbard, who is, um, one of our school counselors in Lebanon. Is the recipient of the main school counselor association emerging school counselor award. This award recognizes a certified school counselor who has worked in the field for five years or less. And has contributed outstanding service or innovation to the profession. The recipient maintains high moral standards in their personal and professional conduct. They work to develop programming that supports all students' academic, career, social and emotional successes. And they're a leader and an advocate in their field and collaborative with students, families, staff and the greater community. And he was nominated by a colleague and supported by the district administration in Lebanon, so that, um, he will be receiving that.
That's amazing.
Yep, that's great. We also have, um, Brenda Cravens, who. She gave you her retirement letter months ago, uh, just to help with the transition, but her last day is tomorrow. And that is forty two years, eighty six days. So that is, is quite impressive. And then, um, as you see, we have some students in our audience and they are, um. Going through a unit in their social, in their class, citizens, um, it's active citizens. So they're here and I hope that this was, uh.
Yeah.
Hopefully you'll take away a lot from this. Um, and then just two more quick things. I know there was a question about could principals or administrators come in? And just talk a little bit about some of the safety drills that they're doing and different things like that. And we'd like to schedule that. On December fifth, because most of them are going to be present for the code of conduct meeting. So if they could just come in and we'll just do a quick review about some safety things that they're able to talk about. And then the next one is just a question for those on the policy committee. We're trying to kind of offset the policy committee with the code of conduct committee. Um, so would December nineteenth work at six? For the policy committee? Knowing that we would, we could have a six thirty meeting. With the representative, with Tiffany and the representatives. We could go six to six thirty and then six thirty to seven for that. Um, that first meeting, I don't see has to be too, too long. Just we'll talk about the, you know, the process and everything.
Good work for Hank.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay. Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Can you remind me?
Yes, yes. Also, I'll share that. I'll invite, I'll do a calendar invite tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, do we have any others?
So on the celebration note, so our basketball team. Is amazing right now. Max Preps has Noble as number one. Just, that's so crazy. I'm so excited about that.
Voice.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing. That's in two or three years, a really big change.
Yes.
Who knows? And the football team too. I'm not as well acquainted with the football team, but it's amazing. They're doing some great things. Very cool.
Great season.
Um, the, a couple of the district P T Os have worked together to do a cereal drive to put boxes of cereal for a backpack program to send home with the kiddos. Um, over the longer breaks, they could actually take a full box home, um, to, so they would have a good weekend. And that, um, ended last Friday and we collectively collected over three hundred box cereal, boxes of cereal. And were able to go to Hossi, Knowlton and Northbrook Elementary and do the domino effect of kindness where you looked at all the. That and do that. So the kids got to come down and see in all the schools and then we got to, um. Loaded up all at the, in the backpack pantry. Um, I think there were seven of us who spent the morning together doing it and yeah, it's cool. The kids from three out of the. Five elementary schools got to see everything.
Cool. Very cool.
I saw love there, by the way. You talked about love there. Um, but, uh. Knowlton School is doing a drive right now, ornaments for kids in our district that are in. Um, but, uh, Nolton School is doing a drive right now, ornaments for kids in our district that are in need of clothing. Um, so if you happen to be around the Nolton School, stop by and grab some ornaments and sponsor a trial, I think they're all due by December seventh.
Nice. Josh?
Two things, one's a suggestion, um, you have, uh, I'm very interested in assessment in our district, obviously. Um, and so my suggestion is maybe to consider setting up a subcommittee in the board, um, to have a discussion with our administrative team and just about assessments in our district. Um, cuz there's obviously a lot of questions, and to take many board meetings to keep talking them might be, um, just too much. And if we did a subcommittee that could actually spend the time, dive into it, and then present and a summarized version to the board, um, of kind of where we're at and where a suggestion direction might go. It might be a helpful thing, something to consider and consider whether we want to put it on an agenda at a future date. Um, the other thing I want to talk about is there's just been a lot about emails, our last meeting, um, Madam Chair, you, you mentioned that there were some things on the email that you felt should be discussed publicly at a meeting. Um, so I encourage you to put those on the board for a time for us to talk about. And then I'd also, um, put today's email issue, um, on the board so that we make time to have these conversations rather than them popping up.
What do you want me to do again?
You mentioned that there were some things that in email, um, our last meeting, it was in the minutes, um, that you felt should be discussed publicly, like, like at the meeting. And so I just would encourage that discussion to happen.
Right. And so what I'm gonna do in the future is when I see that, I'm gonna say, this we need to discuss in public, so let's not do it through email anymore.
Are we gonna discuss those things we, we, that you suggested we should discuss publicly, or are we gonna actually?
Well, I don't want to go back and rehash everything that has been said. Um, I thought we decided we were moving forward from.
I think those topics were good topics to discuss publicly is all, I just, it's not, not the, not the tone, cuz tone is personally applied to emails, it doesn't actually come through an email, right? So, but if the topics, if you felt the topics should be discussed publicly, then I would say let's add them to agenda, let's have that conversation.
I think I wa, I was just saying in general.
Oh.
This kind of thing needs to be, we shouldn't be talking about on email, we should be talking about in a meeting like this.
Then I misunderstood.
Nancy?
I just wondering if anybody knows or can help me with, uh, the individual reports that the NWEA supposed to be sent out to the parents. Do we know how, do, how do they get them and when do they get sent out?
They get sent, they're gonna be sent out in report cards, the NWEA.
Yeah, they, they, that's, is it the main through test?
The three-year assessment results?
So it'll be the spring results, so they would be sending home last spring's results, probably this report card.
Yes.
Because it's just the spring that we are mandated to send out. They might send the fall or winter if it's, uh, but it's not the state assessment, it's per teacher, if it's informative for a parent.
I know, I noticed that as a parent that you only get it by request, so, um, like immediately after. Um, which the teachers were amazing about sending it like in two seconds, but I don't know if every parent necessarily in the district knows that. So we might just want to add, I mean, not add anything to the community engagement piece, but, you know, share that with the parents. Cuz we really celebrate, like, whether they did well or not, like, we really celebrate them just finishing it. And it's kind of fun for them to see how they beat last year and all this, so.
Nancy?
One other thing, I'm not sure whether this should have been an email to you and Audrey or not, but, um, our website had October dates, October events listed on it right up through November fifteenth or sixteenth. That might be something that we need to, and I apologize if I should have sent it as an email, but it's just something that.
Yeah.
That I know that, uh.
So the date, the.
The events.
Up until November fifteenth.
No, there were no November, as of November fifteenth.
There were.
No November events listed on the web, so nothing like concert, all of that, stuff was not listed. I was looking for the time and.
Okay.
Realized that we were still registered with all October events.
Okay.
I have one other, just to celebrate, Northbrook Elementary School did a lovely Veterans Day celebration. Thank you, worked on that too, that was lovely. The only other comment I'll make is with regard to tone, I, I think tone is not the issue I have, it's actual words. If we're saying people are not doing their job, I think one of those emails said that you disappointed in the board not doing its job. And the one specifically that went on social media referred to the board not having done it for several years, but what you actually said here, Josh, was it was one year, and that's a big difference. It's been your experience.
The posting was not mine.
I thought you two worked together on it, so.
Not my posting.
Gotcha. But anyway, I think those things we do need to discuss when they happen, because they become problematic for the board's relationship with our communities. If there's board members telling communities that most board members are not engaged or not doing what they should be doing, that's uncomfortable for everyone on the board. And it makes it really hard to work together as a board in good form.
I agree. Anybody else have any more others?
I, I'm sorry, I just don't know where that's coming from. I, I'm sorry, I gotta call that out, I don't know where that's coming from.
You sent an email, the one that I think you're talking to Nancy about.
I'd love.
Was relative to.
Present those emails, right? Let's present those emails and let's talk.
In it, it's.
Cuz I, I hate the backdoor and the accusation that.
It's not backdoor at all.
Board members who are, are just disparaging. I have worked really hard not to be disparaging, I think I am.
I could pull it up right now and read it to you.
Then if we want to add it to the agenda, we would need to motion for that.
I don't, I don't know what to say, because I, am I, am I the only one who, who saw an email that said?
I said my piece.
I'm disappointed, yeah, right? I'm disappointed in the board, I mean, those sorts of things are not unclear. The word, your words are pretty clear. And I, I have heard you take them back on occasion, which makes it really difficult to address. And this one, tho, those words are clear on the truth seekers, it says the board hasn't done it in years, that's.
Again, not my posting that you're attributing to me, correct?
Okay, I, earlier in this meeting, you said you two worked together, so that's, and, and both names are on it. Both names are on it, Josh, I know you're laughing about it, but.
No.
Both of your names are on the document.
Yeah, and I, 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 let's have the public discussion, let's share, let's share the postings. I'm happy to, to address.
You're there.
Thing, and I'm, I'm happy to discuss it publicly, I don't put anything in email that I'm not happy being on the front page of anything, so.
For clarity purposes, could I please get a copy of the annual goals that have been dra, drafted in the last few years, just so I know.
The what?
The annual goals the district has drafted. I'm not talking about five-year goals or the ten-year goals, I'm talking about the annual goals, cuz my knowledge, I have not seen any annual goals anywhere in my research. That were, or, or measured or, or reported on. And, uh, and they could be out there, I'm just saying, I haven't seen them, I haven't found them, so if I could just get a copy of some of them.
Okay.
I will perfectly, will be more than happy to send out a clarification on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Do we have any public input tonight?
Kids gonna join the school board when you grow up?
Uh, Joe Forte from North Berwick. Um, Nancy, last year, we spent a lot of our time here, um, trying to figure out how much we could cut from the district's budget.
You're talking to me personally?
Well, you said you, you weren't aware of, um, goals, right? And, and talking about goals.
I just want to make.
Because last year, we were talking about cuts, right? Josh wanted us to institute these unreasonable cuts that we actually ended up thankfully.
Correct.
Institute.
I was bored. The chair has the allow, you can't disparage me.
Okay, he has a right to say what he feels, he's not swearing at you, not doing anything.
You are not allowed to let him make incorrect response about, about me, that is your role as a chair, as a point of work.
Well, we'll go back to the lawyer and what he said about that later, let, let him finish his statement, please.
Focused on the three percent figure. That took a lot of everyone's time, when we could have been talking about goals, and we could have been talking about how to support our students. But instead, we are fixated on three percent, and then five percent, and then six percent, and now we're fixated on eighty percent. And we're arguing about sixteen points versus eight points, and let's make something very complex even more simple sounding, when it's actually complex. And it needs to be complex. Acceptable behavior, what does that mean? That looks different at different levels and at different schools. We have experts for each grade who know the answer to that question already, what acceptable behavior looks like. We're paying them. They've taken years of study to figure that out. They've had years of teaching to develop their body of knowledge about it. How could the board possibly benefit them with some one-size-fits-all statement about what acceptable behavior looks like? It's ridiculous. All these complaints that you're talking about, where are they coming from? Where's the data? We want to be data-driven, right? Where are the data points? Without that, it's all just anecdotal and hearsay. Demanding higher test scores or more tests puts more pressure on already underpaid and overworked teachers, unless we're gonna support them more. Right, then maybe we could ask for different tests or higher test scores. Let's give them more support, let's give them more support staff. Finally, maybe we'll have universal pre-K, and that'll help with the, with the entering students, right? Maybe if we could double the, the number of bus drivers we have, they could all start school at a reasonable time and end at a reasonable time, right? But no, we're gonna cut, we're gonna cut the budget, and then we're gonna add more tests. Absolutely ridiculous, or cut a bunch of tests and then try to find the perfect test that doesn't exist. I mean, that whole presentation was so riddled with mistakes. Research Gate, that's a forum where researchers share work that's not in its published form. So it's drafts, it's pre-publication drafts, it's not peer-reviewed. It's like saying you found it on Google. It's not a legitimate journal. Test scores are flawed, everyone knows that. When you make teaching about teaching for the test, then you don't educate the whole student, you miss out on that. When you focus only on reading and math, you miss out on all these other things that are critical for their growth. And then that has a negative effect on the test scores. You put more pressure on the teachers for the tests, that pressure trick goes down to the students. How about focusing on this last year instead of trying to defund us? And yeah, boards need to operate with mutual respect with teachers and administrators. And we haven't had that since you've been here.
You can allow that to.
Can you direct your comments more to me?
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, crap. Sorry, yes.
How can we expect trends to improve when we're undermining our educations, our educators with cuts? Right, you don't improve trends by changing tests or adding tests or reducing tests, it's by supporting the educators more, it's by supporting the students more.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I only got everyone to put down their phones, that's good.
I make a motion.
Okay, I'll listen to a motion.
I make a motion for Darren.
Thanks.
All those in favor? You have a good vacation, see you in your, in December.